And...
Is your mic on?
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
It's just that live music, that wonderful music.
It's just turned down. We noticed that last night, too.
Can you hear me now?[14.12][14.12](Laughter). Okay, we've called the meeting to order. Let's see, the first thing on the order is volunteer appreciation. Daisy Hickman.
Hi. Can you do it for me? I've never done this before.[30.11][30.11](Laughter).
And a letter, it's just funny.
Matt, you be nice. You won't get a cookie. Many of you know me. Some of you have come before me, went on the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. But April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and Kaiser is built upon volunteerism. It's one of our pillars, and we're very, very proud of that. And we're very, very proud of you guys, particularly on this board. This isn't one of the more glamorous boards. Yes, Matt. And it's a lot of hard work, and we, as the city government, realize that, and as the citizens, we realize that. And we really, really do appreciate all of your dedication. And so I have brought cookies.
Thank you, Daisy.
Mr. Chair, may I offer a thought? So, I'd just like to say, as Daisy's passing those around, I know the Volunteer Coordinating Committee gets to put up with all of us that volunteer in positions. And so you're also volunteers, and so I personally appreciate it. I've seen you a lot at the meetings. No thanks. And it's cool that there's only one position right now in the city that isn't currently accounted for, which is hard work. And you're doing a good job getting the word out there to recognize people volunteer the quarter, too. So, awesome.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Okay. Approval of minutes for 29, March of 2019?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written for the March 2019 meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Sorry, I didn't see the motion. Please, the motion. Okay, a second? Okay, thank you.
So, they pass with Crystal Wilson being absent. This is, item four is the appearance of interested citizens. So, for any, is there anyone here to speak on anything tonight, other than the public hearing regarding the zoning UT? Okay, so we will get to you folks very shortly. So, we're going to continue the public hearing with proposed text amended for section 2.118, urban transition. And to open that continuation. And staff, start with you.
Do you want me to go first?
You start.
All right, I get to go. I drew this short straw. He's my boss. I'll go first. So, last month, we brought you some text for the UT zone with the intent to kind of streamline the process for building permits within it, to allow some, not having to go through conditional uses every time you turned around in the UT zone was sort of the intent. And then we got into this conversation about another option would be the possibility of the legislative rezone, yada, yada, yada. So, at that meeting, you folks had asked us to reach out to the UT zone property owners, which, thank you, UT zone property owners, for attending our meeting tonight. We appreciate you guys being here so that we can hear from you firsthand. So what we did, we sent out a postcard, which was included in your packet, to all the identified, I believe it's 118 properties. It's either 118 or 119. I wrote down both numbers. But I believe it's 118 individual properties. There were 111 property owners, because there's a few property owners that own multiple properties that are zoned UT. So, we sent a little postcard that directed them to our city website with a packet of information on the text. And Dina in my office helped us create a little short, four-question survey. I would like to say we got more than 10% response. That sounds better than 15 people. But, I mean, but we got 15 responses, which was great. And I put those at your guys' seats. I think everybody should have that, this little chart with some bar graphs and whatnot. The results of the survey weren't super informative. Basically, we asked, are they supportive of the amendments? It was split kind of down the middle with the majority kind of not being sure or not knowing. When we asked the question of if there would be support for the possibility of rezoning, of the 15 that responded, six said yes, six said no, three said, we don't know. And then, as far as people having future plans to develop or redevelop property, nine said no, only three said yes, and the other three said they weren't sure. And then there's a few comments at the end there that I think were reflective of some of the questions people had and concerns that they had, which I think are kind of helpful for informing as we move forward. You know, the other thing we talked about at the last meeting was the concern regarding the placeholder language I had put in quotes for you to consider, which was the shadow plat concept. So, we rewrote that with this current packet with some revised, some revised language. And I will just say this, you know, in baseball, you get three strikes before you're out. So, I know in April, Shane got strike one on the shadow plat language. Well, it might be today that Shane found out he got strike two on this language from the legal department. But the good news is, is that I think I'm going to get one more chance, hopefully with some direction from you folks and you folks, as to how we can make the language work for everyone. I'll kind of defer on that to Nate and Shannon to talk about. But the crux of the issue in the legal department was the concern of creating a land use decision within development standards that weren't clear and objective enough. So, I said, why can't people just trust me? I am the government. I'm here to help. Thank you. Yes, that was Shannon's credit. But they didn't, they didn't like that response. So, we have some ideas, and actually Nate, I'm going to let Nate talk about them, because he will explain it a little bit better, about a couple of options that might work on fixing that language. You know, as I said last month, and I still stand behind this, you know, the UT zone properties, they've been planned in our comprehensive plan for low-density residential development from the inception of the city becoming a city. So, it's, what we would consider in the land use world, they are committed to future residential uses. But when it happens is not our call. That's private property owner's call to make that happen. The intent of these changes that I brought to you folks was really to make it a little easier administering the code, not to make it more cumbersome for the folks that own UT properties up there when they want to build onto their house and add a bonus room or build a shop. At the same time, we are keenly aware that the city is lacking available lands. Couple of the comments received in the survey actually indicated that, and actually encouraged the city to reduce lot sizes down to 2,500 or 3,000 square feet even, was one of the comments that we received. And I think, I think it is important for us, whatever we do moving forward, that we pay attention to how we can protect the ability for these parcels, some of which are a little bit larger, to achieve some future development if those property owners so desired. So, one of the, one of the things that Nate and I discussed is I had put a placeholder in there of a quarter acre being kind of the magic number, that if a lot was over a quarter acre, we'd want to see this redevelopment plan. We talked about maybe that number should be more like half an acre, based on when we look at what it takes to redevelop properties or divide them. But if Nate is ready to jump in, I will pass it to him to talk about a couple of the solutions he had for this language in 2.118.05.
So, as, as we are wrestling with how to proceed with this, we're kind of boiling it down to what are the issues we're trying to pay attention to. And quite honestly, the whole purpose of the UT zone was to make sure that as properties are developed, they are done in a way that makes orderly sense and not preclude the development of the area by developing it in a way that would block, for example, access to neighboring properties or access to their own properties in the future. Because one thing is certain, properties within the urban growth boundary are not multiplying. And so, the, the market pressure is going to continue to mount, and there's going to be more and more pressure, basically, to develop properties within the urban growth boundary at a, at an urban density. And so, our concern is trying to make sure that we preserve that kind of, of look to the future in whatever happens. Whatever we do, we really do want to get rid of the fact that Shane has to process a conditional use application when somebody adds a bedroom onto an existing home. Or some of the language in the UT zone that we are scratching our heads, where it's legacy stuff that simply does not apply to what, where we are today. So, we need to get rid of those kinds of things. We need to make those kinds of adjustments. But, so in looking at, it all boils down to us. We have, for example, we have design standards that a single-family home has to comply with design standards. You can't just put up a box in the city of Kaiser. Kyle knows this as well as anybody.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Brown. Are you folks having a difficult time hearing?
I can't hear him.
With the noise in the background, if you could speak a little louder, and I would encourage you folks to maybe to move up.
Turn up the speakers a little bit?
Can we, can we increase the volume here a bit?
No, we always...
Our sound guys can't kick up the sound a little bit?
You're going to have to project.
All right, I'll eat the mic.
There you go. All right. Project.
Say all that again.[700.13][700.13](Laughter).
From the beginning, does that... Okay, the bottom line is, we are, mostly what we're concerned about is preserving connectivity and preserving access. And if somebody has a half-acre parcel, and literally they put a large home smack dab in the middle of the parcel, then that will basically consume that half acre, and there won't be much future development potential. I mean, yes, we could look at an accessory dwelling unit. We could do those kinds of things. So, one of the approaches that we have is to add some specific requirements on a larger lot. The threshold is a little, right now, we're proposing a half acre. A quarter acre, you don't have a lot of variability on a quarter acre. You know, that's 11,000 square feet. And yes, you can push a home to one corner or whatever. And however, it just seems like we don't really need to, to stress about that level of detail. What, so what we're suggesting is that for properties that are half acre, that want to build a new home, basically scrape the, because all of the properties are occupied. So, if you wanted to scrape your property and redevelop and build a large, single-family home, that we could basically require a specific standard, which would meet Shannon's concern about subjectivity and, and making this a land use kind of process, that we just simply adjust our setback requirements. For those kind of properties, we could establish that one setback, one side yard or the other would be increased to 25 feet. An access easement is 20 feet, and there's a five-foot setback to that access easement. So, if we simply required that on a larger parcel, that if we increase the setback on one side or the other to 25 feet, it automatically would accommodate an access easement to the rear of the property. Coupled with that, we would also suggest that we establish a maximum setback. We have minimum setbacks in the zone, but that we establish a maximum setback. And that would then basically say, okay, you can't just plunk it down in the middle of the property. You have to push it forward and have a normal residential kind of spacing on the street presence. So, those would be two things that we could do and strike the language that would, that Shane worked pretty hard on coming up with. And it's not his fault, so you can't, this...
Come on, I wrote it.
And that we would simply, that we would simply have that as a standard. That's one way to approach it. The other way that we have been beating our heads against the wall is to simply proceed with, well, there's three options you're going to have. Another option would be to basically set a threshold that anything under a half acre would be, would, would simply be rezoned to the RS, and that anything over half an acre, which there are several parcels that are one acre and above, would remain as UT zones. And that way, we would have the conditional use process. We would have to go through that land use decision process to look at how the property is being developed, and basically preserve kind of half and half. Half of what is existing now with the conditional use process, we would still propose that regardless of whether it's a partition or a subdivision, that the conditional use process would apply. And we would eliminate the conditional use requirement for additions and the like to an established, single-family home. The third option would be to simply proceed with a legislative rezone, knowing that people that have, for example, this only triggers and it only happens if you have, if you redevelop your property. In other words, it would be the same rules that apply under any residential, single-family zone, any RS zone would apply, and that we would then proceed with rezoning everybody. Non-conforming uses would still exist, and there would be no requirement for people to comply. The only thing that if we chose that approach, I would suggest, though, that we actually do additional work in the development code and strengthen our language and requirements for connectivity for properties that do partition or subdivide, so that we make sure that we capture that. Now, the third option basically is not directive, and it would not require somebody that had one acre to push it to one side or to do whatever. It would, the third option would basically say, you know what, the market is going to dictate, and we would then rely upon that and, and strengthen our requirements for connectivity when the properties were divided or partitioned. So, those are kind of the three options you have. The option that you have before you modified a little bit to create some additional subject, not subjective, objective requirements, make, push it to one side, push it to the front, that would, that would be an option. And the second option would be a hybrid. The smaller parcels would be rezoned, and the larger parcels would remain UT zones with the conditional use requirement. And the third option being simply proceeding with the legislative rezone, making the zone consistent across the board, and that the same rules apply basically to all properties that are currently zoned UT. So...
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. So, my apologies for missing last month's meeting between being sick and being on vacation. I missed most of March, I think. So, my apologies for not being there. For both the audience and for the commission, although there's a lot of important changes here, a lot of what Shane and Nate have been talking about is in 2.118.05. And I'm going to read the suggested added language, so you have a flavor for it. And it says, "For properties greater than a quarter acre in size," we're talking about maybe making that a half acre, "but for properties greater than a quarter acre in size, a redevelopment site plan shall be submitted to the community development department in conjunction with the development of any new structure. The redevelopment site plan must be submitted for review at the time of building permit approval. The redevelopment site plan must demonstrate the proposed placement of the new structure does not preclude the potential future redevelopment of the parcel to identified urban densities in the underlying comprehensive plan designation. In addition, the redevelopment site plan must account for connectivity options to adjacent parcels with future development potential." So, when this was done, I talked to Shane last week, but I was tied up with some other matters, and so wasn't able to talk to him until after the packet deadline. And then he and Nate and I got together this week to, to add a little more detail for the audience and for the commission, because some of you may not be familiar with, with the general concept. What Nate was talking about, about legal's concern is, in Oregon, of course, certain types of decisions fall into land use decisions with capital letters under state law. And building permits are not really land use decisions. Building permits are supposed to be decided on things like, here's the minimum setback, and here's a standard that you can just look to, and you get approved, or you say, here, change this. So, my concern was with reading this, is currently, if somebody comes to put a house in the UT zone, it's a conditional use permit, which is a land use decision. The idea now is to try to make it an outright permitted use, to make it easier, folks, to put a house in. And certainly, I don't think there's any disagreement with the idea that an addition should be able to be put in. I think that change is not really at issue. But if someone's coming in to put in a single-family house, under this language, my concern was, well, you don't have a land use decision. It doesn't say it's conditional use permit. It doesn't say it's a type one, that we have decisions. And so, I'm not sure how you can do this. So, the debate with the three of us was, well, that, I mean, Nate was saying, well, we do that all the time with building permits, and I'm not sure it's true to this degree, though. So, redevelopment plan. So, what Nate was talking about earlier is one of the options would be to try to change that and saying, saying a redevelopment plan that we kind of look at and approve under kind of subjective decisions could be made more objective with minimum, maximum setbacks. Because the whole concept here is the idea that if somebody comes in, and let's use a half acre instead of a quarter acre, I think that's a better example. The concept is, is we don't want people to develop that to preclude development of efficient use of it. And so, if somebody comes in and says, well, I just want to put a house in the middle of it, then there's no way it can be developed to the densities. And that's the language we see there. So, the question would be, is how to deal with that. And, and one of the options, as Nate pointed out, would be to fine-tune that to more objective standards. So, it could be done as part of the building permit, because you could just look at it and say, well, the minimum, maximum setbacks are such that it's, it's placed in a location that makes the lot developable efficiently. The other way to do it is simply divide them, so that if a single-family house was on a lot under a quarter acre, it'd just be outright permitted. But if it was a half acre, let's say. But if it was over a half acre, then it would go through a conditional use permit process, similar to what we have now. So, that, that is sort of, and Nate, I think, did a good job of outlining what those options are. My, my only additional thought is, is if you're looking at the possibility of a legislative rezone, we would be, that'd be kind of starting from scratch, which is fine, because the notice is different. But that, that does have the advantage of taking lots that make sense to make it residential, because it wasn't supposed to be UT. I've been around a long time. The UT zone is starting to finally diminish, but it, it wasn't supposed to be forever. That's why it was called urban transition. That's what the UT is for. So, I think the idea of moving towards that is one option that you could look at. So, those are kind of my, my thought, preliminary thoughts, at least, on that.
And just a couple more thoughts from this part, is in looking at each of the individual properties, and Mr. Chair, I think you went out and looked at some of them, we have several examples of properties that really are not the church-owned properties or the storage unit properties up, at the very north. Those are still UT zones. We have our pump station that is a UT zone. And so, there's, as you look through all of those parcels, there are, sorry, I'm not close enough, but the music has stopped. That's good. If you look through each of those parcels, there are several in there that shouldn't even belong in the UT zone anyway. Now, but obviously, there are many parcels, though, that do have development potential. And so, that's why we're doing this process.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Mike?
Nate, I was, I wasn't quite clear on that last option, the legislative rezone, right? So, if someone wants to develop, I, I thought you said they wouldn't require, basically, what was originally called a shadow plat, so there'd be no way to control where they put the structure? Is that what you said?
That's, that's correct. So, right now, we don't have locational requirements. If
you own a piece of property, you have the ability to build a home on your property. You meet your minimum setback requirements. You can only get so close to the front and so close to the sides.
In RS.
In the RS zone. Now, mind you, we are constantly, in the work that we're doing with our buildable lands inventory, we are constantly being advised that we need to pay attention to efficient use of the land within our urban growth boundaries. And so, this kind of flies in the face of that. However, I believe that, that we are to the point, and, and it will be getting even a larger issue, that the market is putting a lot of pressure on how we develop our ground. But it still would remain, so it would remain in the hands of the property owner. It would be the property owner that would decide that, how that property would be developed, and how they would add on or construct that sort of thing. So, it's kind of a spectrum thing. How, how intrusive do you think our regulations should be in the process?
And Michael, I would just, I would just add that generally, in the northern plan of Kaiser, when we see properties come in, you'll either see them come in as partitions, which is defined as three lots or less that you're creating in a calendar year, or they come in as subdivisions. When they come in as subdivisions, they currently automatically rezone to residential, single-family, because that's the underlying comprehensive plan designation for the northern plan of Kaiser. And we have not seen subdivisions, not in the last 10 years, and I would, I would say probably not even in the last 15 years, that have come in underneath the minimum density provision of four units an acre. It's generally, a developer is going to push that to the max that they can, just because of the cost of infrastructure that has to be shared, to build the roads, to put the pipes in the ground, and all of those things. Historically, we're seeing around six units an acre is a pretty legitimate number that we hit on a very regular basis with subdivisions. Sometimes seven, if they can get a duplex corner lot or something like that. But just, I do think Nate's right. I mean, we have not seen the developer come in and go through the process of getting land use approval to divide up a property to build half-acre lots. We just, we don't have the land capacity for that in Kaiser. So...
Shannon, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Following up, and I'm not sure this was your question, Michael, but I think the concept with the legislative rezone, of course, it'd be up to the commission and ultimately the council, would be to look at that size acre distinction, and, and properties that were over that, and let's just use half acre, would stay UT, to allow a review of it to see that they would be efficient. And I think that's the concept that you folks were looking at, too. I just wanted to make that part clear.
And the, one other thing, as Shane was talking, we are in the process, as you know, because you're in that process, too, of our buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis. And part of that, part of the outcome of that and the suggested strategies, though we're not through the process, and nobody's made a decision yet, but it's pretty clear that some of the recommendations are going to be that we decrease our lot sizes, that we look at efficiency measures, that we actually find ways to provide for all housing types. And those are the kinds of things that we are going to be looking at across the board, not just here in the northern section of our city. So, I, I think your decision should be made in that context, that there's more changes coming across the board that this would fit in context with. So, just keep that in mind.
Mr. Lawyer?
Thank you. So, I apologize. I was really struggling to hear a lot of the first option pieces. So, what I would request is, in as lay terms as possible, so I can understand it, can we go back through the three options so that I, so that we're all clear, and those that didn't hear it out there could also be clear what those options are?
I'll try again.
Because I, like, I have some notes, but I kind of blended notes as I was trying to hear stuff. And so, if I, if, if we didn't hear it, and I, maybe I'm the only one, but I'm assuming folks out there didn't.
It's fine. No problem. So, the three options, and anybody can jump in here, but basically the three options is kind of, with a couple of tweaks, the option... is, kind of, with a couple of tweaks, the option that is in the staff report. And that, you know, that would be, that basically, properties under, and we're suggesting, half-an-acre would probably be more of a, a better threshold than the quarter acre. Quarter acre, there's not a lot of flexibility. So, properties under half-acre would be rezoned, and they would be required, the proposal basically says, they would be required to demonstrate how they're accommodating future growth, by the language that, that paragraph that was added.
Rezone, did you mean?
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't think. That's okay. You just reordered them, Nate. That's okay.
Anyway, and what we're, what, basically, our conversations with the attorney's office, we're suggesting that that could easily be tweaked to make them more clear and objective standards, so that it's not a land use determination with some sort of subjective kind of decision on the part of, of staff, but that it would be based on an increased setback, and I, those were just the examples that I gave, an increased setback on one side to provide for an access easement, and a maximum setback of 25 feet. Again, those, those are suggestions. So, basically, that's the first option. Keep it kind of like what you see and have read for the past couple of months, with some of those tweaks, making the standards clear and objective. The second option, what, what order did I give them in? The second option would be, basically, a hybrid, Shannon's plan, in that we simply rezone everything under a threshold, and again, we're suggesting, a half-acre is probably more appropriate. Everything under a half-acre would simply be legislatively rezoned, and everything over would remain under the current structure governed by a conditional use property, anytime it was divided for development. And the third is simply legislative rezone, knowing that we're not taking any rights or restricting anybody that currently is occupying and residing and using their property, that it would simply be, new development would fall under the new, the, the changed standards of our residential, single-family zone. And when I say changed, remember that it's not, any subdivision already has to comply with those, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. It was just really tough to hear earlier.
Jeffrey?
I just want to check my understanding on part one. So, let's say, we do part one, and we make the, we make the dividing line at, if you have half-an acre, that's where you would need to submit the redevelopment plan, right? So, let me talk to you about the people who do not have half-an acre, people who have less of half-an acre. Today, as it exists right now, the UT code requires that person, if they want to make an addition, if they want to do an accessory dwell, and any number of things, they need to come to you for a conditional use permit, they need to go through a bit of a process in order to do things that are not generally objectionable, but because of the way it's written, there's red tape.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming to City Hall, right?
Right. Yes.
That's, yeah. If this language changes, the change to those people who have less than half-an acre, the, the change that they will be able to notice is that they no longer have to apply for conditional use permits for those things.
Correct.
Which is essentially the only change that those people would see.
That's the idea.
Okay. So, for the people who have half-an acre or more, those people, right now, because of the way UT is written, will already have to come to us for a conditional use permit, if, for example, they do want to put a house right in the middle of the lot.
Yep.
Or anywhere.
Or, or anywhere, right. The change, if we do, if we go with option one, will be that, instead of a conditional use permit, they will simply come to you with a redevelopment plan, proving that they will not be building in such a way that will preclude future development, future division of the lot, anything that'll, that'll... So, it seems to me, there are very few real changes that property owners will notice, or be able to, to be impacted by, if we go ahead with option one.
Except for the people in the first group.
Not that there, yeah, not that there won't be changes.
Make it easier for them.
There won't be changes, but there certainly wouldn't be changes that a reasonable person would say are negative changes. Is that correct?
No, there wouldn't be negative changes.
Thank you.
The, the only thing that I would add, is under the first option, the part that, that we would still have to work out, is whether or not we could get to a, a state where it was purely objective with regard, because it, it couldn't, coming in to have a redevelopment plan approved as part of a, just a pure building permit, is somewhat difficult. We would have to convert the idea of a redevelopment plan to numbers, such as Nate was talking about, with, with a, kind of a, a different concept, not just a minimum setback, but maximum setbacks, to make sure that the, that the structures are located in an efficient manner. And so, that, that'd be one way. And then, while I have the floor, if I could, Mr. Chair, the, the other option that I didn't hear listed, would be the option of having the single-family home, a new single-family home on, under a half-acre, be an outright permitted use, and a single-family home located on over a half-acre, be a conditional use permit, similar to what we have now, except making that distinction about the half-acre size. That way, you, in, in that fashion, then you don't, you don't have that issue about whether or not it's a land use decision or not, because somebody coming in for one over half-an acre would have the conditional use process, so they could go through that process.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this point?
Just, so, you know, you were saying a little bit earlier, Nate, that bear in mind that there'll be this bigger change in the city with zoning, and, so remind us, and the audience, why we're not waiting to include this into that?
Well, in my mind, it kind of, the future changes kind of underscore the need for this change, in that, the work that we're going to do, it would be, it would, it would then require us to sort out exactly how that then fits into this process, and, and, you know, what is the work we're going to do then, apply to, and how is it translated into this transition zone that we have? So, I, in my mind, this work, your decision, is important for the work that we're going to do with all the other changes.
So, it sort of sets the table universally in the...
That's, that's, in my, in my way of thinking, that seems to be much more straightforward.
Okay. Okay. We have four folks who have signed up to testify at this public hearing, we'll go in order, and I forget what the rules are for, is it three minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So...
The timer's broken.
I got it. Okay, so, we have four people who've signed up to speak. The first one is Robert Orne. Bob, would you like to come up and...
So, Mr. Chair, as they're approaching, one minute left, I'll just hold up one finger, as you're approaching one minute remaining.
I hope I won't take that long.
That microphone is very weak, so if you hold it close, it'll be...
It's a problem.
Okay. I'm Robert Orne. I live at 7950 Timothy Lane Northeast, one of the roughly acre and a quarter UT lots. I signed up, because I wanted to comment on the shadow plat, plat thing, because I didn't think, I thought it was, I didn't know what it was, and I thought it was poorly defined, but it sounds like staff has dealt with that, so I won't talk about that. When you talk about a redevelopment plan, that could include the equivalent of a shadow plat, is that correct? Or some plat showing fut, what future development would look like?
So, the, the language that we proposed in the amended staff report, which came out last Wednesday, it calls it a site plan, it's a redevelopment site plan. Now, Bob, I've been told that I might not be able to use that language. So, that's what Nate was, Nate and Shannon said, eh. So, that, the idea was, it would just be submitted as part of the building permit, it'd be a, kind of, an administrative look to say, hey, is it smack dab in the middle of the property, or could you, in the future, if somebody wanted to come in for a partition or a subdivision down the road? I thought it was pretty simple. In my mind, they said it wasn't as simple in the legal world's mind, so.
Okay. Well, this is going to be pretty fast, since there's not that much to say about the shadow plat. But anyway, I think most of the changes you're proposing here are positive. You get rid of stuff that's obsolete, and clean it up, and streamline the process, so that's good. The other comment that I wanted to make, is I have a little hobby farm, and, so I wanted to comment on the idea of just rezoning all the UT to RS, or whatever the appropriate zone is, if there's a fire station or something on it. I know Nate just said that if you do that, it won't change the existing uses that we have on the UT zone, but I guess I have a suspicious mind, and I was very leery of that proposal, because I don't want to lose my, any existing rights I have to operate my little hobby farm. So, for that reason, I would be against converting everything to RS, or whatever the underlying zone is. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Shane or Nate, could you address that? Because it would be, if it's rezoned, it would be non-conforming.
Yeah.
But under present ownership, they would be allowed to continue.
Yeah, I, I was just told I'll let Shannon do that, because he's a lawyer.
So, what Bob and Shane were referring to, the, the formal term is a non-conforming use. So, if you have a hobby farm in the UT zone, it's outright allowed, if it gets rezoned to RS, it's not outright allowed in the RS zone, but because it was pre-established, it, it becomes a legal, non-conforming use. And I can't remember if the period is one year, but Bob, if you, like, sold the property, and the next person wanted a hobby farm and continued it, that'd be fine, but then, if they stopped the hobby farm for a year, I believe?
Yeah, how's that happen?
Yeah, whatever. I mean, if they, they stopped, you, it can expire, and then the next person may not be able to start it again. That'd be, you'd be long gone, right? But the other issue, though, and again, that depends on what ultimately the council does, is even if you were looking at this rezoning issue, I think they're not looking, I guess one of the options would have been rezon all of it, but I think the other option was rezon only those ones that are less than half-acre, so, it wouldn't, you wouldn't even get to that spot if that was the option that was chosen, just so everybody understands that.
Thank you. Next, Chris Aldrich. Chris, hi.
I wasn't sure if I signed up or not. I thought maybe you were talking about something back here. So, I may not have read through all this as closely as you folks have, so some of my concerns were, and I think they've been addressed partly, is that, so first of all, I'm on a 1.45 acre lot. Point 6.5 is a driveway. Point 8 is a lot, surrounded by subdivision. Previous owner had sold off part and built five houses that are with density, totally surrounded by houses. So, part of my thing, I think I heard, is that some of the language under the UT, if I'm still viewed as over half-acre, and going to have to be, follow all the original rules, is that if somebody want, if I wanted to do an addition, would that process be streamlined in getting an approval to do an addition?
The, the intent would be yes, Chris. That, that is kind of the intent. And now, clearly, we don't, we don't have the language for Nate's options tonight, that's something that we're going to have to kind of, we would have to come up and, for those standards, but that was the idea, versus having to do a conditional use permit for an addition onto your house.
Okay, so then, under, we mentioned additional dwelling units, or additional accessory dwellings in this conversation, and it's my understanding, under the ADU, ADU rules, that approved zones, urban transition is excluded. So, would that change, so that if, under a conditional use permit, it was deemed that my property would accommodate an ADU for a rental purpose, that that somehow would be changed in the future to maybe allow that?
So, that, actually, Chris, I'm glad that you brought that up, because that's actually something that in our surveys that we received online, there was a comment made about ADUs, and the comment wasn't real clear on what was intended by it, but currently, the way the UT zone is written, there's a catch-all category that says, as a conditional use in the UT zone, you can allow uses that are allowed in the most restrictive underlying zoning designation that can be applied to the property. So, we would look at, in a UT-zoned property currently, and I didn't propose to change that language, but in the UT zone today, if somebody came and said, I want to build an ADU, subject to the standards, then they would have to get a conditional use to do that, they would be able to do it, and we would hold it to the same standards that the RS zone is held to. So, there's kind of a workaround. That is something that was brought up on the radar, and frankly, we probably would need some direction from Planning Commission, if we wanted to expand the reach of the language we proposed. I added language in the proposal to allow outright, single-family dwellings and accessory buildings, but because accessory dwelling units are their own designated section and category in the code, an access, it's, it's weird, an accessory dwelling unit is not the same thing as an accessory structure.
Right. That'd be like a shop, or something else.
So, Chris, can I ask a clarifying question? Is your desire that you would want to be able to have that ability?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so, as...
And I have a couple different options with my property. I have, in my opinion, not enough access or space for dividing and building another single-family home, especially, certainly not more than one, and that would be tough. But I have a nice place where I could have a standalone additional dwelling unit, and I also have a, a long garage, I considered maybe building an upper unit over the top.
Okay.
And I also have a bonus room, that I can make a really small one, like a 300, 400-square-foot one, but under, my understanding is, all excluded, period. And, and so, I'm hoping that I'm not hearing that, so.
So, under, under the three scenarios, basically, you would be, if it were rezoned to RS...
Then I'd be okay.
Then you would be okay.
Yeah.
If you went through the conditional use option, there's this workaround that, that Shane is describing, that...
But may or may not work, depending on my personal circumstance, or who you talk to. I mean, that's iffy.
Well, it's, yeah, fine. I mean, it's a process.
Generally, conditional uses are allowed with conditions, they're not, I mean, yeah, it could be deniable, but I, I think we'd have to allow you to do it with some conditions. That's, I mean, generally, that's how a conditional use would work.
Okay. But it, it is a process.
Yeah.
You would have to go through. And so, those are, that's how that would apply to you specifically.
Okay. All right. Chris, we've used up your time, but go ahead, councilor.
Yeah, I, I want to clarify. I thought we only allowed one. Two on a residence.
And I wasn't suggesting three, I was suggesting one of three options.
Good, I was hearing three options, and I wanted to...
Yeah, I'm aware that there's only one allowed, right.
Stay tuned, folks, I don't know.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Aldrich. Before I call up the next gentleman, I'd like to commend the staff for reaching out, and it's, it's exciting that you did that, it's even more exciting that people showed up, because usually, we don't until after the fact, whether, no matter what the subject is. So, we have a public hearing, and people show up, I commend you guys for being interested in your community, and in your, certainly, in your individual properties, as well as Kaiser as a whole. Let's see, Lee Sheng Sing?
That's a mistake.
Oh.
I just thought he was signing up.
Oh, okay. You were hoping for a door prize, huh?
There's cookies.
Okay. Marcia Bernardcheck?
This is a whole new group. We used to testify. Well, not quite, Shannon, you're still here. Actually, I came because I wasn't very clear, when I looked at the text amendments, it didn't seem clear to me. And it's a little clear, but... And it's a little clear, but not a whole lot clear. I think maybe there's some more discussion that needs to go on about the properties and what people can do. I have an acre and a half. We have animals, and we do a lot on our property, and I want to be able to continue to do that. So I'm not an advocate of really changing it to the single-family residential. I think, I know the urban transition kind of is a problem in a sense, but the reality is, if you looked at the broader picture of infill for the city overall, instead of just viewing it as urban transition area, the scope of trying to add dwellings to Kaiser to meet the demand for housing, it would be just our little group here that has property. I mean, if you were looking at a broader picture, I think it would solve some of the problems for the UT zone. I think people that have had properties for a long time, they will be fading out, or I don't know what would be a better way to put it, but they will be, their properties will end up, and the market will drive it. I think taking things in pieces and trying to save this lot and that lot, really, when people have a substantial amount of property and they are deciding to develop it, the market drives it. And I can say that with some confidence because all around me, I'm surrounded by subdivisions everywhere. And in the beginning, when the UT zone was developed, it was to kind of protect and save what we had so we could still function in that. And like Shannon says, it's been quite a few years, and now, really, we're just a city. We aren't the farm community. We're a commuter area, especially in Clear Lake area. If you tried to go to the freeway to go north, you've got a long wait to get on that freeway. And a lot of our people that live in our area, they're commuters, and they're, you know, they're coming home to their smaller lots than bigger houses, but it isn't the same Kaiser maybe we were 20 years ago. Well, I know it's not. But really, the property rights issue is important to be able to add on or to do things with your property when you have a lot of property. I don't think we would be oblivious to what the city's goals are because people do need housing. It's important. Portland's facing it. We're facing it. People need affordable housing. They need a place to live. So maybe the duplexes aren't just on corner lots. Maybe they're in other lots. I mean, there's so many ways to look at it without isolating just the UT zone to fix a problem with the UT zone because it's cumbersome. I just, I think the people that do have property would like to continue to use their property and to have the freedom to either add on or have an accessory building without a huge process to go through. But I think everyone's mindful that we're not in the country anymore, or at least in our area. And it's just, it's happened. But I was one in the survey that said about the smaller lot size overall, because I do think it isn't just, it's easier to develop our properties because we have acreage, but really, there are a lot of properties in Kaiser that could fit another house on it. Am I off?
No, you're in a minute.
That's all right. Well, there used to be a little light that came on in the old days. Oh, okay. But anyways...
Next fiscal year, we'll replace that bulb.
But I think, you know, getting rid of a lot of the cumbersome part of it, I think, is fine, but I would prefer to have the UT zone or something there that while we're there and we're using our property, and then as soon as we chose to develop or someone bought it to develop, it would automatically rezone, it would just be rezoned to RS. I don't, is that a problem to have it that way? Right. So.
So, well, I will speak to one thing, just to kind of clarify one issue. So the UT zone rewrite, it's been on our work program for a couple of years, and this actually got brought back to the top because I just had to go through and do a conditional use in conjunction with a partitioning on lots that just should be zoned RS over on Wheatland. The house is being built right now. And it just, it kind of had brought it back to the forefront of why does this guy, this family, who's partitioning their property to build a home for a relative or their daughter or something, anyway, why do we have to make them go through this additional $710 fee and process? So it kind of had brought it back up, and that's kind of why it raised to the top of, oh, let's do that this month a few months ago. So just to kind of bring that in there, because, Marcia, I appreciate what you're saying, and I...
But you know what I mean.
Absolutely.
It's just that there's, and it's like, it's kind of like the market driving it. It's like the game of the partition where you do the partition, and then two years later, you do the other partition, which really isn't a partition, it's a subdivision.
Right.
So it's like, you know, it's a game, kind of, to manipulate the code to be able to do things that, unless I'm incorrect in that.
So, Marcia, you and Bob both have expressed some valid and real concerns about the existing use of your property, that you have animals, that you have a hobby farm, and that's, I understand that concern. I can't say in terms strong enough. You have legally established uses that you are allowed to have, and the city cannot take those away from you unless we wanted to compensate you for them. And so, and we all know that's not going to happen. So you have legally established uses, and this change will not affect your ability to continue those legally established uses. I cannot think of anything else that would be, that this would affect in the uses allowed that, because you can't do commercial now.
Right.
You can't do multifamily now. You can't do any of those other kinds of more. The only thing that changes with this proposal going from UT to RS is just simply the agricultural aspect that you already have legally established.
Right.
So you, we cannot take that away from you. I cannot say that strongly enough, that that is something you have established as a legal, conforming use, and as I said, unless we want to compensate you for it to stop that use, we do not have the ability to do so. So I want you to be, I know it's, I'm from the government, trust me, I'm here to help, and all that kind of stuff. I get it.
You're funny.
But that is, that really is the context that we have to consider this in.
Right.
That this is not as though we're going to come knocking on your door and say, "I'm sorry, you can have no more animals." I mean, there's still cows up here, and...
I know, that's always given as the example.
Well, I know, but we recently rezoned that to multifamily.
Right.
And those cows are still there, and they are there legally. So, just, I just want to say that as strong of terms as I possibly can, that I don't want you to worry about that aspect of these changes.
Well, I just think, you know, part of it with the, as infill, as opposed to these larger parcels, it would be advantageous if the lots were smaller so that more homes could be put on them, and that wouldn't be such a burden for some of the, in some areas, not like Clear Lake, but in some of the areas of the city where they have a substantial, they could do a flag lot easily if it was easier to, you know, with setbacks and whatnot. If it made it a little more flexible, people could, you could provide more housing in Kaiser.
We agree with you 1,000% that, and that's...
But see, the code drives that, though, unless the code changes, the setbacks and the, unless that changes, it won't change.
Honestly, we are working on it, and there's going to be, there's going to be significant changes in the development code to address just exactly these issues that you're describing. So, but that, but again, that doesn't apply to the UT zone.
Right.
That applies to the city in general. So we...
Right, so not specific to the UT or whatever ended up happening.
Right.
Okay. I'm good. Anybody have any questions for me?
Okay. That's all the people we have signed up. There's a couple of other people in the audience. Do you folks have any questions or something you want to verbalize about the UT zone? Yes, ma'am. Come forward and identify yourself, please.
My name is Barbara McCullough-Jones, and I reside 1165 J's Drive Northeast, but I have a couple of properties in Kaiser. Both are in North End, and they are in this UT, although thanks for saving the postage. I only got one postcard, so that's good. That's good. So, a couple of things. One is, I appreciate that part of the use would take some of the onerous burdens off of the homeowner wanting to make improvements if, you know, on the property, if we take this from having to get conditional use permits and go through that whole process to lightening up on some of that to just do something simple like add a room, right? So I think if that change is made and included, then that's great. I guess my, you know, on one of my properties, we are hemmed in also, as has been described earlier tonight, with development all around, except a fairly large tract of about five acres total that are second-generation occupants of some of the original folks who lived in that area back when it was Clear Lake and it wasn't Kaiser yet, and it was still part of the county. And so some of those are what I call sort of heritage lands. They just keep getting passed down and passed down. So there's a lot of concern about losing a way of life that has been known generationally, you know, one after the other. And as I look at that and talk to those neighbors, and we too, like Bob did, we have a hobby farm, and it feeds our family, and it, you know, provides food for neighbors and anyone in need, actually. But I guess one of my questions that I've not heard ever addressed by either the city council or the planning commission is, where does our responsibility as a city really lie in trying to meet all of the housing density needs in this area? Ultimately, what really, do we have to take plot sizes down so small that you can barely put a house on it? I mean, honestly, I get on my riding mower to mow the lawn, which takes me several hours, and I watch my neighbor plug in their, across the road, plug in their little electric mower, and he's done in 10 minutes, and I'm going, "Why do you even bother?", right? But, you know, it comes down to issues of where does our responsibility lie? We keep talking about, you know, this massive influx of people. We're a commuter community now, and so where does Kaiser say, "We've done enough"? We want to leave green space. We want to leave open land. We want to leave larger plots in our city because it does represent a way of life and a philosophy of not only heritage folks that have come before all of us, but things that we want to leave, you know, to our families in the future. And that philosophical discussion, as far as I know, point me in the direction if it has, I'm happy to watch YouTube videos till my eyes fall out, that somebody can explain to me really how we've come to this place of being able to say, "Let's just make those plot sizes so small that we can cram six houses on an acre, and you can reach out and flush your neighbor's toilet." I mean, it's, it really becomes a quality of life issue that I would like to see addressed in this process. There's pragmatics about zoning and permits for building and so forth, and then there's this who are we as a community question, and I'd like to see that addressed in this process. I don't know what you were referring to, I think. Shane, when you first said that there's this larger thing that's coming at us anyway, right, and we've got to be ready and nimble and ready to address that, I'd like to know more about that in conjunction with this particular process because, as somebody said earlier, why do this now? Why not wait and see what that larger plan looks like? But it's those other nuances that I am mostly concerned about at this point.
Barbara, those are really valid questions, and I think there's, in the process of trying to be answered, and it is somewhat philosophical. There's also the land use laws of Oregon that we are held accountable for to a certain point. At the same time, we recognize, you know, if you're out of dirt, you're out of dirt. You can't just...
Exactly.
You can't house people if you don't have space, other than you can reconfigure the existing boundary. Because, you know, there's been discussion about, you know, does the UGB expand? Do we stay at 36,000 or 7,000 or 8,000 or 9,000 people, and, you know, as you and I check out, two new people get passes to move in?
Right.
You know, so those are, they're philosophical, as well as they're somewhat mandated by state land use laws, and where common sense, or if common sense crosses on that pathway, maybe then you get to a happy point. But that's something that the planning commission is addressing, and that's one of the things that the Buildable Lands Inventory and the Housing Needs Analysis is doing right now, and that's a few months from close to finished, but we don't know what that product is going to look like. So those are, those are going to remain unanswered, but it's input from the citizens because we all live here, and we all want different qualities of life. Some are the same and some vary, but those are things that are challenges for all of us, so we all need to be involved and engaged in the process, so.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. And I think, just quick, real quick, I would be surprised if the state mandate said you must build on every square inch of dirt that you, you know, possibly have within your boundaries. So there's got to be some room there for us to talk about green space and open space and elbow room, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah. And so, Barbara, if I could urge you, actually plead with you, to become part of that process, that Buildable Lands Inventory and Housing Needs Analysis, because those are precisely the questions that are being asked in that process as to what is it that we expect the city of Kaiser to look like and provide for in our housing stock? And how do we meet the state-required demand that we provide for housing for our expected growth? Those questions and those housing policies are precisely what that process is asking. And so, not that we're trying to dodge those questions here in this process, but what we are trying to evaluate here are what are the distinctions between the urban transition zone that exists now and the residential single-family zone that applies universally and indeed applies to development in the UT zone? Those larger questions on what is our densities and what is our, where is our open space? Where is our elbow room? Those are questions that live in the development code on a larger scale that are being talked about and decided upon in this other process. Not, they're not being decided upon, but they're being, the formula is being recommended, and the, just those concepts are being identified in that process. So, May 25th, if you'll put that on your calendar.
Okay.
We are having a big open house effort where we're trying to make sure that the concepts that are being, have been discussed in the committee.
29.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have a time?
Yes, it's 7:00, and it will be here. And I, again, I plead with you to be, not just you, but bring everybody you know out there to ask those questions precisely.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to engage in that process, and that's great. Thanks very much for your time.
Hold on one second. Mr. Johnson, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I'll add something, Gary, thank you. I know the commission would like the planning wonks here to take Barbara's question and answer it for the next hour and a half because it's, I mean, that's just such an open-ended, huge question, and I'll make this real brief. What it reminded me of is nearly, nearly 20 years ago, I was crazy enough to get involved with St. Paul and did some planning, some of the periodic review and UGB stuff with St. Paul. And at that time, St. Paul had a line in their order which was resisting a UGB expansion that said a city should be able to decide what rate of growth they should grow at or to not grow at all. And the Land Conservation and Development Commission said, "The first part of that is okay, but the last phrase, 'or to choose to not grow at all,' is not an option." I mean, and so, no, you don't have to fill in every square inch of dirt. You get to choose as a city how you grow, but you can't choose to not grow at all. You either have to grow denser or out, or a combination of it, really, is what it amounts to.
Thank you. Thank you. Shannon, guidance. Keep this open, closed? Is there any other comments from the public while we move through? Okay.
I'm going to look to Shane and Nate to see whether or not open or close. I guess at this exact moment, I would not close it, and perhaps some discussion. Remember the general rule, some, some of you folks may not remember the general rule, is discussing about options is okay, but when you're ready to kind of make a decision, that's deliberation, and that's when you close the hearing. So, what I hate to see is close the hearing, and then after you start discussing, realizing you have more questions that you want to have answered at the next meeting, and then the hearing's closed. And that doesn't allow the dialogue with the public. So, at this exact moment, perhaps a discussion among the commission and additional questions for staff would be appropriate before you close the hearing, and then you can decide that in the next several minutes, or half hour, or so.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the commission? Michael?
Just have a repeat again of the options. Jeffrey actually said it really nice and fast, so maybe have him do it.
Just have my old notes here, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. So, Michael, basically, the options that are contemplated are, it would be similar to what you have before you, with the exception that that language in paragraph 2.11805 under the Development Standards Section, it wouldn't say a quarter acre, it would have a half acre cap. And the idea would be is that we would create some clear and objective standards for setbacks, minimum-maximums for the lots over a half acre, and for lots under a half acre, we could essentially create an exemption for those ones. So, you wouldn't have to have that same set of standards. So, that was one option. A second option was kind of, yes?
In both cases, still requiring conditional use permits?
No. In, in both cases, not requiring them. I, I'm not sure I heard you, but not requiring them, in either case.
Okay.
Okay? So, the second option would be sort of a, what I think Shannon or Nate said was the hybrid, which would be to have you guys give some direction on looking at pursuing a legislative rezone for the parcels under that half acre, to have those go over to the RS, and for parcels over a half acre, retain the UT zoning and conditional use permit requirements, kind of like we currently have. So, some of those strikeouts I created, we'd add those back in. And then a third option was just go all-in, rezone all of it to RS, let the, and my little note says, let the market drive it. So, I think Nate must have said that the last time he explained it. And then Shannon threw in the monkey wrench of a fourth option, which we didn't have, and that was the half-acre exemption concept. So, and it would be where you would basically restructure the text a little bit and say that the new house or the shop on an acre under a half acre just straight up allowed outright, and then the ones over it would not be. So, that was...
So, the ones over...
Yes, the ones over it would be the conditional use.
Right. Currently, a single-family house, regardless of the size, requires a conditional use permit. This fourth option that I, I'm just, as an option, would be to say if it's under a half acre, it's just outright permitted, which is like the proposal, but if it's over a half acre, it stays as a conditional use permit.
Thank you. What else? Mr. Callier, your hand is halfway up.
Yeah, you're right. I, at the same time, find it difficult to do. When I was going through this a couple, three times, I was trying to put myself in the position of one of the property owners, trying to figure out, I saw where, I saw where, what I could do, what I couldn't figure out is, what is it going to take away from me? Some of that's been answered in that if you have a hobby farm now, and you can continue that, and if you sell that, it continues as long as they continue it, let's say skip a year or something like that. Okay, I understand that. But is there anything else, as a property owner, that it's going to negatively affect my ability to use my property?
Which option?
All four of them.
I think, I mean, I think it's a super hard question to put every kind of scenario in place.
I agree. And what I'm trying to avoid is, is this governmental term that I've grown to hate is unintended consequences. And, and that's what I want to be careful of, because we're affecting 118 pieces of property, 111 owners.
We, we understand that, and we have been trying pretty hard to identify what those unintended consequences may be. And if we're comparing the existing condition versus what any of these proposals would create, I am having a very difficult time thinking anything would be a negative aspect, understanding the only negative aspect that could potentially be is if somebody has not already been using their UT zone for agricultural purposes, and they wanted to start all of a sudden.
After.
After whatever the changes would be. But honestly, I don't, we have not seen a lot of transition in those properties. We don't see those, and perhaps, I don't know, Marcia or somebody else could tell us, but we're not, we're, I'm not seeing a lot of turnover in those properties. So, somebody to basically say, well, I'm going to establish a new farm, that would be, they would not be able to do that if it were rezoned to the RS.
And, and we would, and we would be providing some control over location of where they can build, so they could develop it, so it can be developed later.
Depending on the option.
On the option. Option one, for example.
Right.
Under the thresholds.
Nate's option one.
Nate's option one. Yeah. There's a renumbering there partway through, which caused some confusion, I believe. If I, if I could, Mark, I don't, I think Shane and Nate are right. It's really hard to figure out why there's any downside for the property owner. About the only downside, and I think it would be really, because back up, somebody comes in right now for UT, and they want to develop the property, and it's big enough to do a subdivision. There's a subdivision application anyway. About the only thing that I could think of is not, to change your question around, not for my property, but for folks like Bob and Marcia, and this is really minor, is, right now, if somebody came in, in property next to them, and wanted to develop just a single-family house, Marcia and Bob would be entitled to a conditional use, they'd have notice of that, and so, they could object. Now, if it was under, depending on the option again, but if it was under a quarter acre, it'd be outright permitted use. I think that's a pretty minor, minor change, though.
And, and keep in mind, they could object, but they would still have to answer to the established criteria.
They'd still have to answer, of course. Yeah. I mean, it's still, it still probably would be allowed. So, I mean, I can't think of any downside to a property owner there. And I mean, the idea was try to make this easier, not just on the property owners, but on staff too, for these applications that Shane was referring to earlier.
All right. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Okay, then, let's move for, oh, Mr. Brown.
I'm just trying to think. The only thing that I, I'm not sure was made clear, Shannon did mention it, though, if we choose option, whatever number that is, of the legislative rezone, we, is that three?
Two and three.
It is on my sheet.
For two rezone options.
Yeah. That's true, two and three.
Okay, two.
Only under half acre.
Okay. I'm not sure option two would require starting over, though.
Anyone's where we're legislative rezoning.
Okay. Never mind. So, the, basically, the rezone process would be, we would initiate a separate process. So, just so you know, we would then, we'd then back up and do the separate process, if that's what you thought was most appropriate.
If there was a rezone, the people here and the other 100 and however many minus whatever I'm subtracting here, they could still continue to function, live, and do all the things that they can do now. But at the time of change of ownership...
Not change of ownership.
Change of ownership.
Abandonment of the use.
Okay.
So, remember my example with Bob.
Okay.
If the person he sells to keeps using the hobby farm, that's fine. If he stops using the hobby farm and it's been rezoned RS...
So, just if there's that one year...
Right.
Well, I got to say, we would turn that over to the Hobby Farm Enforcement Bureau that we have.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I mean, I think, I think realistically, just, I'll jump in, because I've worked here a really long time, and I've done code, I did code enforcement for a really long time. It's not going to be a hobby farm that's going to be at issue, it's going to be animals. Because animals make noise, animals have smells, and when neighbors move in, sometimes there's animal complaints for things like goats, horses, cows, pigs, farm animals that aren't defined as pets in our development code. Because realistically, a hobby farm use, when we're talking about food production, there's not a property up north that produces enough to be like a legitimate commercial farm use, which is the use listed in the UT zone, which is tied to the SIC manual, which is literally a commercial farm is the idea there. So, it gets in the weeds a little bit from a use perspective.
Yeah.
But the, the general, I mean, so like, I, we would never, but there could be a question, and a long, long time ago, I had to make a new property owner who moved into a property in residential West Kaiser, get rid of a horse that they had that was not in a property that was zoned for horses.
A new horse.
And it was a new horse, it was a new owner, there had not been horses on that property for five years or six years. And so, that was, I made a great new friend that day. So, that, I mean, that would be something that realistically, if a UT property was changed, that's currently UT today, since it's UT today, and if somebody moves in and it's UT, and they have a little barn and they get a horse, we're not even going to look at it, because we're going to go, ah, farm use, we'll just call it under that. So, but anyway, it's, our pre-existing non-conforming section is going to govern that, and I, I guess the one thing I would just kind of hit the pause button on, like, I'm not confident there would be no unintended consequences, because that section, pretty much, I have to get my attorney involved every time we dig into that section of the code, because there are some provisions that if you expand it, or you eliminate it, or you cease doing it, and you want to restart it, that you have to get a conditional use to do that. So, I mean, that's, but if there's, I mean, I think if there was a specific example, Gary, that you guys were concerned about, we could definitely kind of analyze that and get back to you on it.
Okay. Thank you. Matt?
So, one question I had is, some of these properties are currently zoned UT, and one of the questions that was proposed to me was, some of them have wells, some of them have septic. If they're re-designated, rezoned to RS, it would be a non-conforming use, correct? And let's say, for example, the septic goes bad, or the, the well dries up and they need to change, then they would have to comport with the standard for services, correct?
None of, none of that changes with this proposal. Those rules are already, are already established, and depending on their proximity to a sewer line, which, by the way, there, there are, sewer lines are there within 300 feet of all UT properties now. Wasn't so when it was first created, but now, anyway, those rules about whether you connect or whether your well is maintained, those live...
Even with the UT zone, if it changed, they would...
Has nothing to do with the UT zone.
Right.
Nothing.
Okay. There's, so Matt, there is, there's language in the UT zone that talks about different lot sizes, if it's served by public water and sewer and whatnot, and kind of the tail end of the zone, because of those priority areas where there wasn't water and sewer originally back in 98 when the code was written.
And just, just to clarify, regardless of whether it's UT or RS, if a well fails or septic fails or something, regardless UT, RS, whatever, they would have to come to the new standard, as it is right now?
Yeah.
So, for example, if their, if their septic fails, right, they say, hey, we're going to put a new septic in, because they're UT, they'd have to get a conditional use right now, right?
Generally speaking, and I'm not the county sanitarian or the regulator of that standard, but my understanding is that it's within 300 feet of the property line, if the sewer is available, you are to extend it and hook up to it. And that's like a mag, 300 feet is a magic number.
So, if, basically, those rules, if, if a sewer, a septic fails, and the question is asked, do they have to connect or not, the zoning of the property has, is not even part of that, that discovery process?
So, so even in this case where they did an ADU or something on a UT zone, they would still have to bring in all those new services?
That's correct.
Okay. Jeffrey?
Let's say we go with, just hypothetically, we go with option one, we fix up the UT code, we high-five each other and go on our way. Next meeting, we decide that, you know what, let's also consider a legislative rezone. Does choosing option one make that easier, harder, or no change?
No change.
Thank you.
Shannon, you look like you want to add something to that.
Oh, you know, maybe it's time for me to go home. So, I guess there was two rezone options, right?
Two and three.
So, to answer Jeffrey's question, if, it seems to me that if there was any thought at all among the commissioners to look at a rezone, I don't, I, I think it would make sense to at least wait a little bit on this, because there might be, as Mark was talking about, unintended consequences. Let's think about option three, which was, by my notes, from Shane's notes, was rezoned all to RS. Well, if you're really thinking of rezoning it all to RS, then I'm not sure these text changes make a lot of sense.
I think, are you just trying to get out of work because you don't want to prepare an order?
So, so, with that understanding, if we're going to be rezoning it, then why bother changing the, change the text of UT?
Well, I'm just saying that, that it would make more sense, and that's why we put them as kind of one of those four options, not pick two. Not that, by the way, if, if depending on what you wanted to do and what council agreed to do, because council has to decide this, if, if you were looking at option two to legislative rezone for under half an acre, well, that text changes then, doesn't it? Because when one of the sections talks about it being outright permitted use, well, it really wouldn't apply because it'd already been rezoned, so. So, I, I think you need to give some thought to whether or not the rezone idea makes sense, and if it does make sense to put the text, not throw it away at all, but put it on hold, I guess, is what my thought is. I don't know what you folks think, Nate or Shane.
I think that's correct. If, I mean, if we do a rezone in a year from now, then I say, let's do it now. But if we are saying, okay, we still have this issue that we want to get resolved so we can move on and make sense of all the other work that we're doing, then I agree with Shannon, we should hit the pause button and see where we think that appropriate threshold is. Before we create these thresholds in, structurally, in the development code that then would kind of evaporate with a rezone. None of the options include simply ripping the pages of the UT zone out of the book. So, you know, I suppose there is some utility there with, if, if it lives on, if there was a UGB expansion, and if there was utility in another urban transition zone application, there is that. But that is honestly so far in the crystal ball that I would not, I'm hesitant to even bring that up. So, so, sorry.
Okay, I'd like to ask the commission just kind of a nod or something. Is there a sense that maybe we would like to look at, looking at a legislative rezone and not doing a change, not really, I mean, we have to tweak the UT some, but looking at a legislative rezone, and then with that, to go back to Mr. Callier's question, is what is the impact on existing property owners and their uses of their property, as we see them today, if it's legislative rezoned? What's the consequences? Positive or negative? Positive or negative?
I may be rash, but we have thought about this a bit. And I think we have identified for you what we think may be the unintended consequences. That is, of a new property owner being prohibited in the future from establishing a new use that would then be eliminated through a rezone process. That would be something that a future owner, who is not here, would be precluded from. But that's kind of similar to any new property owner anywhere, as to, well, back in the day, we used to be able to, and that, so it really is not so much of a worry for me. The other unintended consequences is, without the conditional use process, then the neighboring properties are not notified of a strict building permit. They are of any other development, any other subdivision or partition, there is a full notice requirement and all of that triggers. But if somebody wanted to build a home on a lot, there is no conditional use. Through a rezone process, it's just simply a permitted use. So those are the two unintended consequences of a legislative rezone. the threshold questions, if we establish a threshold below which there is this and above which there is that, honestly, it's a variation of that, those two kinds of things. We're not adjusting, other than that agricultural use, and I understand Shane's concern about somebody moving in and creating animals and that sort of thing because of his days in code enforcement. But again, we're talking about, that use alone is the only thing that kind of, that changes between the UT and the residential RS zone. So I just don't want to write a full report and identify just those two things. That's all I'm trying to say.
On the timeline, how would it, how would a legislative, or where would a legislative rezone fall in comparison to this bigger issue that we're, the city's working on? Is there something that, you know, they're very close in time? Or is this something that the legislative rezone could happen fairly quickly? And then, at some point in a year or so, that change, the bigger change would happen?
Sure, yeah, I mean, from the legislative rezone perspective, yes, it could happen pretty quickly. The reason being, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Which, actually, kind of speaking to Barbara's comments earlier, the comprehensive plan is sort of what drives what our community's supposed to look like in the 20-year planning period. It's hard because there are documents that sit on shelves a lot and not a lot of people read them. But because we're not proposing to upzone anything, or to change something that's different than our comp plan, which is the 20-year look at how our city will develop over the planning horizon, it's a pretty straightforward process. You do the notices, you set the hearings, you go through the process, and ultimately, it gets, you know, through the process, the council, and adopted by an ordinance. Shannon writes and maps get changed if it goes through.
So, the, I think you're referring to these other projects, and what timelines are they? And how does this mesh with those? The outcome of those other projects are going to be an extensive work program that's going to come back through the process. And so, we have, our window is still pretty large. It's not like we need to get this done in the next 30 days, couldn't even do it in 30 days, but it is work that is going to commence, though, in the near future. So, if the mind is, well, let's see what we, let's see what we end up with after five years and how these other, you know, that's fine, that's one approach. But if we want to consider this in the other process, then sooner would be better than later.
And just the one, the one thing to add, which I wasn't quite there yet, but because the comprehensive plan designates these UT properties as LDR, which stands for Low Density Residential, which coincides with the residential single-family designation, all the planning work we've done in the past 20 years, the last Buildable Lands Inventory we did, the one we're doing currently, it looks at these UT-zoned properties from a planner's perspective for future growth, that it would be expected, that it would be developed with those densities in the RS zone. So there is, like, changing it to RS is already what it gets looked as if it already is. Even though we know it's not that way in the neighborhood. But for the planning perspective of what's the capacity of the land, that's what it's being looked at. So, Michael, your question of the big picture, of is there need to be a massive upzoning or change of how we look at everything in the zone? That has to be looked at, the city as a whole, and to speak to Marcia's comments earlier, it doesn't put it on the UT properties, that puts it on the city as a whole. So that's, I mean, I just want to make sure that we are not getting caught in the weeds of what's the current zoning and what does that capacity mean? Because the folks that are doing our Buildable Lands Inventory and Housing Needs Analysis, they've already, are looking at those properties with the UT designation. They don't look at the zoning, they look at the comp plan designation. So just, so we make sure we're all on the same page on that.
It seems as though we have a lot of work to do on this. And while we want to get it completed, I think we're going to need to take a look at this again next month. I don't, I don't know that anybody's in position to, and correct me if I'm wrong, make a recommendation, have a discussion, and get to a point of a recommendation in a somewhat timely manner? Including that this evening? Do we want to continue on? Or do we want to chew on what we've learned and? Mr. Callier.
I'd like to suggest that we keep the hearing. I would like to suggest that we keep the hearing open, and we, we've narrowed it down to four options.
From two.
Need a little more discussion. We could do more.
I think option seven is really going to hit the spot.
Mr. Brown?
For my sake, I would really appreciate some direction from you as to what are your concerns? We, well, it could be offline, but I would, I would think that you amongst yourself would like to know amongst yourselves, what are your concerns or your desires? I mean, I'm not sure we're going to, we can come back again with option seven B.
Well, I don't want necessarily more options, I just don't know if we can move through, I mean.
I'm not looking for more options myself. What I'm looking for is what I would hope to see next month would be, here are the four options we've talked about in a succinct.
Kind of bullet point, pluses and minuses?
Paragraph, or sentences, or, you know, whatever it takes to cover that, so we can move from there.
Okay. Mr. Lawyer?
And thank you, Mark said it perfectly, because right now, we've started with three options, we ended up at three and a half, an hour, four. And I'm sorry, but it is very important to me to protect the rights of landowners, A, to allow them the opportunities to do with their land what they want, but obviously, take into consideration sort of long-term use and planning in mind. You know, right now, I cannot make any sort of educated formulation of these options into something that would be even a coherent recommendation. I mean, you know, in one area, I'm hearing, yeah, I think, you know, option one's really good. The other one, I'm hearing, you know, legislation, but at the same time, we're hearing from one property owner who says, I got houses surrounding me like crazy right now, that probably weren't noticed under conditional use because it was an outright permitted use, and all these other. So it's one of these things that, it's just like, okay, hold on, I gotta push pause because the options to me are very confusing right now.
I'm kind of in the same boat, so I've got a couple of options that I'm leaning towards, but I don't necessarily know which one I'd want to pick.
We're close enough to hearing more information about the outcomes of surveys from the Housing Needs Analysis and Buildable Land Inventory, the other group that's working, that that information could guide us in the question of what kind of, what kind of, and if, a rezone is the appropriate plan. So more information is on the horizon. More information that we'll be able to use for our decisions is on the horizon. That said, I'm, with respect to the caution that my colleagues have, and with respect to my recent tenure on this, on this commission, I'm not too worried about moving forward with what seem to be common sense changes to a code that will be around for a while. If we, if there is a risk of this commission dragging its feet in a recommendation that would move into a rezone for property owners, I would like those property owners to have a bit more wiggle room in what they can do with their property while we are coming to a decision. For example, if it's a year before a rezone goes into effect, that's a year where a lot of people would be having to apply for a lot of permits if they want to do something, and we might be able to at least take care of that while we're looking at the rezone. So I feel like there are decisions that we might want to wait on, and that there are decisions that we might be willing to just move forward and say, this isn't the best, this isn't the perfect thing that we want to do, but it's a good combination of good ideas that has low risks that we can actually get something done on. I don't know how clear that was, so.
As clear as the rest of it.
That's plan seven, that's plan seven.
The Buildable Lands and Housing Needs Analysis wouldn't be until after our meeting next month, because they come the 29th. 29th, we're going to meet two weeks before that. So that would take us into June. And yet, it'd be nice to get this addressed and completed at the same time. Is there a harm to property owners, to the city, to the other projects we have going on, the housing needs and buildable lands, that really say this needs to be done first and foremost? Is there a sense of urgency to this?
Not immediate urgency, no. The, and keep in mind that the BLI and the Housing Needs Analysis, Buildable Lands Inventory, Housing Needs Analysis, is simply going to be a report. And we're going to have to figure out what to do with that report in the future. So it's not going to be on the 29th, we're going to have a magic answer. And I can tell you that the information in that report is already there, and it is telling us that we are lacking in all of our housing types. So, you know, I'm, whether you want a specific number to go along with that, I guess. So I don't, I don't want to pretend like there's some immediacy here, that we have to get this done tonight. That's not the case. I do, with each month, though, we have other things that we need to turn our attention to as well. That's all I'm, all I'm saying. So, and certainly, if you choose to continue this for another month, we can have offline discussions. We can provide answers to you on an individual basis. Or if you have something that you have concerns about, that you've thought about, what about this unintended consequence? By all means, we can have that dialogue, and we can address that at your next meeting. It sounds like that's the way we're leaning to, is at least continuing this for another meeting. If I'm reading the tea leaves correctly, I don't pretend to be a tea leaf reader. But, so we can certainly go through that process.
What's the wish of the commission? Continue on, or push, Michael?
Well, to add clarity, I'm on the fence. No, I have some strong leanings, like Kyle was saying. And I understand the desire from staff to get a decision made. I would be open to making the decision tonight, but I think I'd be outvoted with that position, so. I guess it sounds like it'll be a postponement or continuation, rather, to next month.
Why don't you throw out what your idea might be and see where that takes us?
Well, you know, one of the things, I'm leaning towards either taking what you've presented as one, I guess, the original one, I still like the quarter acre. Or doing a legislative rezone and just one fell swoop, be done with it. The reason why I'm split on that is because what we've heard tonight, there are some people who seem to have a little sensitivity to a big change, a broad change. And maybe if we kind of made a little toe in the water, it would allay some of the people with the larger properties' fears.
I was just going to suggest that if we're going to get into what option we think we are, I think that's deliberation. And maybe what we really need to do is, if we're going to continue, I've stated, I think we should leave the hearing open, and I think we should take this up next, next month.
I'm sorry, was that what you were asking me, or?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure.
Matt?
So I guess I have one final thought. For the landowners that came tonight, I did not get a clear image from their testimony that said, either A, they liked option one, two, three, four, seven, 15, or any of them. And so, it wasn't very clear, there was some confusion on exactly what the UT language could do or would do. It sounded like they want to retain their rights and their uses as they are, which in any case would generally be allowed. But we've had testimony, we've had discussion about options, but it's not really, I don't, I don't know that everybody out here is clear exactly what the options could be. And I think, to me, that's, that's very problematic.
Mr. Johnson?
The commission is free to continue to discuss, but at this stage, it would appear to me that it wouldn't be a total consensus on to continue. So if you wish to discuss this generally, that's fine. But you may want to consider just to put a motion on the table with regard to continuing it too. So you can decide that one way or the other.
Do you want to hear from any of us again?
That's up to, the hearing is still open, so that's up to the chair.
It is open, and we're kind of back in the circle that we were in last month. So if you can add some clarity, Chris, I would appreciate it, so.
Unlike people who are in a single-family zone, unless you have a non-conforming use, maybe it's being used as a duplex, but it's really single-family and it's pre-existing, that's pretty straightforward in a single-family. In urban transition, just the four people or three people you've heard of today, you're going to have a world range of people, so you're talking about consequences of these events. You have some people who have a nice rectangle with a mobile home and a shop, and they mow grass from edge to edge that could be wiped clean and redeveloped, whether it's in the urban transition or a single-family, same process, I believe, is, with the exception of urban transition, of having to do the conditional use permit plan and extra fees, and running around and banging your heads against the wall. So it is, in a case like that, in my belief, a single going to RS might make it cleaner, simpler, and cheaper. You have other people like myself that have one and a half acres that have almost no ability to create density. It's a large home with a landscaped yard, and that's probably all that it'll ever be. It's too high cost to wipe clean and redevelop. Access because of a flag lot is not accessible. So for me personally, I like the residential single-family option, whether it's rezoned. The other two options don't give me the single-family. I either have to go through the urban transition in plan one, or I have to show, you know, some houses setback and go through some extra rigmarole. So for me, as a residential, large residential lot, the residential single-family would probably be my choice. And then we have other folks in here who have a home, and a barn, and animals, and farm, and. and plowing and different things, and they may have a totally different take on this. So unlike a regular, single-family, you are going to have people with difference of, differing opinions because they're using their, even if they're all the exact same size, one and a half acres, and I know that's not all the case, but those larger lots, people are going to have different plans for their property. And so unfortunately, there isn't a one-size-fits-all, but for me personally, I would vote for something that makes me be able to not have to pay the additional fees for the conditional use permit, allow me to do something like an additional dwelling unit, or an accessory building if I wanted to put a shop for some vehicles, or be able to do an addition on my house, or something like that without having to go through the additional cost and process of the additional use. But that's just for me, but just be real clear that these over half-acre lots are going to have some different opinion because of who they are and what they're using their property for, but I'm in favor of something like a universal, single-family residential zone, so.
Thank you. Kyle.
This was my concern, was no one basically, you know, what Chris had said earlier about what he wants, what he would like to do, but if we make it the threshold at a half an acre, it really doesn't help him. So if there's a way we can make a, the, using, you know, number one, and make, I don't know, an elective process for property owners that's larger than the, the half acre, can we do that? That's where I was saying, I, I've got a couple of different options that I'm thinking of, but neither one fits with what I'm thinking is really needed.
Okay, so you were talking about option, I don't know what even we're up to now. I heard seven before, but that was taken, so. At some point, we have to decide, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish? And what are we, if, for example, our threshold is at an acre and a half, well, what are we, what are we accomplishing? And, and so I, I think, it comes back to me as we started out this discussion, what are our major concerns with what we're trying to get accomplished in the UT zone? And if it is future development potential, there are ways to get to that. I don't think we have, I know we have real concerns and knowing in the world we live in today, they're, understand where they come from about, wait, what's going to happen to this use that now becomes non-conforming? So I understand that, but I do know that under the legal construct that we have to live in today, that that is not an issue for established landowners. That is simply something that they have the right to do. So I, I would urge you to, to keep focusing back on what is it we're trying to accomplish with having a UT zone in the first place? And if we keep a threshold, what, what are we trying to accomplish with that threshold? And that's where I come down to, I, I don't see the, the benefit and the additional layer of involvement for people like Chris who are trying to plan out how they're going to use their property, that sort of thing. So I, I would just urge you to keep that in mind as you, as you consider where we're going with this. I want to be very respectful, you know, I understand, so.
Go ahead, Matt.
So it sounds like there's a lot of concerns, and if you'd like to entertain a motion, I've got one.
Sure.
Like to move the, the planning commission, continue the public hearing on this issue until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did everyone vote?
No. He just, he just did. He was thinking.
Were there any, were there any noes? Okay, so all, all commissioners voted aye.
Any directions or things that we ask of staff to bring back to us? Please, go ahead, Michael.
I have one direction, or one, not the band, one suggestion. Maybe if we do whatever you bring back next time and they start to metastasize into multiple sub-parts and all that, maybe start, if we could use one of the whiteboards and start writing down things so people can actually see. And hopefully they won't.
We have a whiteboard.
Okay.
Just in the outside chance.
I would ask that everybody here make sure that we have your, at least know who you are, so that we can make sure that we send you the materials that they have, so that we engage you in this process.
Did, did everybody put their address down when they signed in?
I don't think everybody signed in.
Not everybody did, I got Barbara, these two folks up front here.
We signed up not to talk, but we did sign in and put our emails.
Okay, I don't have that sheet. Okay, all right.
Okay.
So I, I believe we do have everybody's share.
Thank you.
Well, we didn't move very far, but we added some words, we added an option and a half. But I would, hopefully for, for the community benefit, for staff's benefit and for our benefit, that we can move through this next time and actually achieve a recommendation that's, that's workable and equitable for kind of all sides of the ball.
And I would also urge the public, if you have any questions or you have any input or please feel free to contact us, email us, have a dialogue with us, we, we very much want to engage with you and make sure that your concerns or questions are addressed.
And so that, you know, the next meeting is on May eighth, it's Wednesday, second Wednesday, that's at 6:00 PM.
Okay, so we're going to continue this.
That's what I hear.
So, let's move on to item six, new old business and staff report. Thank you, folks, for coming and please return and like Nate said, get your input to staff so they can get it to us and we can try to make this work for everyone.
So the first thing on the staff business is the buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis, as we've been talking about. You, I hope you saw the, the dialogue that the, that we are combining the last two meetings onto our May 29th meeting, and we're a little unsure exactly the start time, but, so there's going to be a committee meeting before the open house, and the committee meeting we anticipate is going to start at 5:30 and last to seven, and we anticipate the open house be from seven to eight. Now that may change as we develop and get this packet of material all put together, but that's my understanding as of today. Going along with that, and Christopher, I don't think I've sent you that information, my bad, we need the planning commissioners, every one of you, to go online and take that survey, so that they can, even if you just put, I don't know, there's some, there's some benefit to answering that question. So those of you, and I've got your names, those of you who have not, please do that by the, by the end of this week, by the 11th.
That's the 11th is tomorrow.
That's not the end of the week, that's tomorrow. Please go home. I do, it's a number, it's a thing. So please go home, or tomorrow, please make sure you fill out that questionnaire. And I'm going to be sending an email to the committee as well. So it's, we're relying on that as input because we're down, we're basically eliminating meeting. So we need to do this kind of online and to try to go about it in the smart way that we can, so enough said on that. So on the, things are moving along well, the, we expect actually, there's not going to be any huge surprises, yes, there are going to be specific numbers, but as I mentioned earlier, go figure, we are deficient in our supply of all housing types. So, and we can provide the numbers for you and we'll go through that process. But one of those questions is, how do you think the most appropriate way to solve that problem would be? And that would be the UGB question. So that's, that's the last question on that survey, so if you haven't taken it, that's kind of important thing to ask the planning commission. Again, this is not a, this is not a decision process of the UGB, but it certainly has a dramatic effect on the policies that we establish of how we're going to move forward, which doesn't take a very far step to then say, what does that mean about the UGB? So our revitalization plan is also moving forward, we are now circling around a final draft. We have some materials that have been generated in the last week, and so we are going to be digesting that here and having that dialogue with our staff, our consultant staff, and so we're moving forward with that, so stay tuned for those activities as well. I, I don't have specific dates for you, though, on that, sorry. I, I got a. We have another technical advisory committee meeting coming up, but I don't know the date, so.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, that's, good, thanks.
Council, Lyson, Mayor Clark.
Thank you. It's good to hear this conversation, so I've got a little background when this does make it to council, which it will. Just a couple of things, as, one, the city council did replace the mobile food vendor ordinance with one that is now a site permit, so we're now asking the property owner, rather than the mobile food vendor, come and get a site permit, pre-plan, know where they're going to be, how many, and then have at it. All the mobile food vendors are already required to have their licensing from Marion County, so they have to have that, you know, loud and proud. And hopefully that will make it a lot more inviting for the mobile food vendors to do business in Kaiser. Kaiser Fest is coming up, so watch for all of the activities coming on to the calendar for the month of May, hopefully everybody will have a chance to enjoy all of that. Budget is going to be April 30th and May 2nd, the next week, I think, May 7th if necessary. We have, we've been doing it in two for, ever since we sunsetted the Urban Renewal District. Top issues continue to be around the Rock Quarry lawsuit to get them to stop shooting this direction, and Senate Bill 1040, which is, has just moved, oh, it got a, got amended and a due pass, and it's been referred, so it's moving through the process now, it's been watered down, but at least we've got a bill that is moving forward to help us out to some degree. Hopefully we'll never have to use it because we'll get the, we just won't have those bullets flying across the river anymore. And last but not least, River Road and I-5 will be going through paving, repaving this summer, so good times ahead.
Thank you. Christopher.
I've got nothing to report at this time.
Michael, you're the council representative for next Monday? Can you please explain all 18 options? In 34 seconds.
There's always more.
Four A, four B.
Try my darndest. Yes, I can make that.
Anything else? Matt?
Just because I want to brag on it, April 20th, which is a Saturday, from 10 to 2, the Second Annual Soggy Day in the Park, free event down at Kaiser Rapids, backhoe, jet boat rides, river permitting, lots of fun stuff, hosted by the Claguer Creek Watershed Council, bring your family, come down, down, have a good day.
Thank you, adjourned. See everybody next month, go home.